Yes.
I'd now like to call this common council meeting, and this will be done for the order on his fifteenth day of July twenty twenty five at five thirty PM. Clerk please conduct the roll.
Councilmember Laskoyak.
Here.
Councilmember Zatorzki.
Here.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember at large, Wiser.
You're here. Clerk please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the free, open, sovereign, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Before we proceed with our agenda, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of one of our former police officers, Arthur Smotinsky, who served the city for thirty-two years before his retirement in two thousand and two. If you would, please observe a moment of silence in recognition of Arthur's contributions to our community. Thank you. And now let's move forward with the business of tonight's meeting. Next we have the certification of prior meetings.
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, July first, two thousand and twenty-five, was presented to the mayor on Thursday, July tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Pursuant to section three point zero three of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect. In witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and seal of the city of Dunkirk this fifteenth day of July, two thousand and twenty-five.
Is there a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes? Approval is presented.
Shalom.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Nichols, seconded by Councilmember Laskoyak. Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Laskoyak.
Aye.
Councilmember Zatorzki.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser.
Aye, the minutes are approved and presented. We now move to privilege of the floor.
Privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case each individual appearing shall be limited to three minutes. And to any person representing any group, who shall be limited to a maximum time of five minutes. The privilege of the floor is reserved for members of the public to speak on any subject pertinent to the affairs of city government. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limits. The chairman may determine in their discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. The chair shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste or slanderous or not germane. The time limit specified shall be adhered to, except the chair may allow any person speaking to complete a statement or a thought started before such time expires. Any longer time may be allowed by the chair with the approval of the majority of the council.
Privilege of the floor is now open. There are members of the public who wish to speed and step forward, state your name and address, and address the council.
Hi. My name is Cheryl, and I live on Lemming Street in Dunkirk. And this is in regards...
What's your last name, ma'am?
Deering. I'm sorry. D-E-E-R-I-N-G. This is in regards to the recent news that we might be considering a small modular nuclear plant, potentially for where the NRG plant currently sits. And what I was wondering if our council and if the mayor would consider looking into what exactly the community benefits would be, if there would be a community benefit... I read about it, and I thought it would be something that would benefit us. A community benefit agreement where Dunkirk would receive a larger portion of revenue from the taxes? Is that something that's possible for this, the city to do?
So much during, we're in the very early stages of this. This is our very first community engagement session tonight following the council meeting. There has been no proposal and no acceptance to even have this community considered, which is why we're looking for community input. So, once we get further down the road, we would know what that would look like, similar to what NRG had done with the city in the past.
I'm suggesting we do that, and I would like to be on a committee if there's a possibility of that in the future, okay?
As it's progressing.
To be considered.
The opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Yes, Kurt Warrenborough, one fifteen Fraser Street, Dunkirk. The NRG plant has been there just close to eighty years. At this point in time, I feel it's time for the city to really look at the possibility of moving this plant or any future energy-generating plant south of Route Five. There's plenty of room down the end of Light Street or West Point Ave. Please do not put another industrial site in the harbor area. The plant is worthless to future development for energy development, so it has to be cleaned up and completely barren. So, please do not. And let the city vote like they did once, and the original vote was voted down to allow that plant to be there. A year later, the city voted again, and we voted for it to be there. Now taxes were good for a lot of years, but it's time now to take this property on the Great Lake and not put it back in an industrial setting, put it into some sort of high-rise something. There's a lot of possibilities. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Good afternoon. Bob Henderson, eight four six Jackson Street, city of Dunkirk. I'm here for the power plant information, but really what I'd like to know right now is what the status is on yard waste from Lucas Avenue. There's a tremendous amount of people that are taking all kinds of branches and debris, and it's in front of their houses, and I don't know if anyone's picking it up or not, but I was just wondering if something could be done in the very, very near future for collecting yard waste, or not even collecting it, taking it back somewheres around the city barns or some other designated area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Robert Pleschowski, sixteen Seal Street. We got a dog problem in our neighborhood. Nobody wants to take care and get a solution for it. I can't get in to talk with the mayor. I asked for appointment. I'm going to talk to the city attorney now, and I'm going to talk to him, um, Stiles. And nothing's getting done. It keeps on, it's been out four or five times in the last month. And I can't get, get nothing, no solution for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, good people of Dunkirk. My name is Brody Loftus. I live at six oh five Roosevelt Avenue. And my understanding of the primary purpose of this meeting was community input on that plant. So, that's why I'm here. My opinion is that if the options for this plant that's currently being util, or not utilized, is nuclear or nothing, then it should be nuclear. That's my opinion. Everybody has opinions, so I'm sure there's some fear of what nuclear power means. It works for us, we go. So, again, if, if there's nothing, then it needs to be something. My question would be, I understand it was a natural gas plant before. Logic to me says that wouldn't it be cheaper to make it natural gas again?
It was coal.
Right, it was coal. I, I read that it was converted to natural gas, or maybe that was something that was discussed. Didn't happen?
Didn't happen.
Didn't happen?
Didn't happen.
Oh, very well then. Okay. Well, then the question is, are there other options? Can it be converted to natural gas rather than nuclear? And would that be more economical? And then the other question, uh, let's see, three more questions. How long would it take to do this? How much would it cost? And who would be contracted to do the work? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. Is there anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Jedi Hill, over at the yacht club. So, speaking as a scientist, first off, there is no such thing as safe nuclear. It's not a question of if, but when you're going to have a meltdown sometime in the future. It might be seventy-five or a hundred years. I also have things from FEMA and strategic relocation guides showing all the nuclear targets for the country, as well as the nuclear fallout as the escalation of World War III. Dunkirk, New York, is one of the safest spots in the country. It is a stupid idea to try and go nuclear. We have better options. Personally, I am looking to buy NRG and turn it into a factory for my hip system, hexagonal interlocking pillars, made out of HDPE plastic with flame-retardant foam, so we can build the walls and roofs of houses, floating docks and floating structures, so we can build housing that's affordable instead of affordable housing, and then use these to actually create hydroelectric power plants on Lake Erie. And then we can just put cables in and run the power back. We have this beautiful lake. Hydro is green. Why would we be stupid and bring nuclear and make this location a target? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Is this still an open forum, or can I speak other than the media?
You're welcome to speak on any matters pertinent to the city government.
Yeah. My name is John Detola. I live right up on Central Avenue. I've been there for sixty-four years. Just want to give you a little background about myself. I've been working in network television since nineteen eighty-nine. I've been to every continent. I've been to every major city, and I'm an eleven-time Emmy Award winner, and I've been all over the place, always observing what could make Dunkirk better. And real quick, it's never too late to make a bad decision a good one. With all the issues in Fridonia with the water, perhaps we could still, we could go back and go over again of keeping the hospital here in Dunkirk. That's my one thing I'd like to say. And also, too, I called earlier, and I came here to a meeting here earlier in the year regarding the trucks and how when they turn corners, especially on my corner, Willipour Central, they keep going over my lawn. And I was supposed to get a callback from one of the, the people, representatives from the Department of Public Works on whether or not we could pave it or anything like that. Never got a call back. So, my, one question real quick tonight. If I pave that area of the sidewalk myself, do I need a permit or something like that from the city?
I can talk to you after the meeting.
Well, you were supposed to talk to me afterwards, the last meeting too, but I, you never did, and you never called me.
I apologize for that.
Okay.
I was in Hammond for four weeks with a double bypass, and so I, I missed your phone call.
Well, I, this, I came, I was here like in April.
I know, I know. But I had, I had some personal things. I had to take care of some...
Okay.
Apologize for that. Before I did that, I executed a purchase order to get that done.
Okay.
It hasn't been done yet.
All right.
So, apologize for me having some health issues that still...
There's no reason to apologize for your health issues.
I totally apologize for that. I could have taken your call if they would have given it to me. I could have kept you up to speed. I didn't do that. My failure, we'll take care of that. It's not a big problem, but you and I will work together and get that done.
Okay, because I just want to make this Central Avenue beautiful as I possibly can with my help on my little part.
And I'm with you.
Okay.
Sorry that I was out of commission.
All right. And just real quick, another thought. You may want to rethink putting the hospital, keep it in Dunkirk.
Thank you, Mr. DePaul. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Doing once, twice. Privilege of the floor is now closed. Next, we move to communications from the mayor, including his approval messages. Mayor Gobias.
Thank you, Councilman. First, I'd like to thank everybody, Public Works, Police, Fire, all of our city employees, for the wonderful job that they did, including Scott Mekus, who coordinated all of the events surrounding the Fourth of July. As everybody knows, it was a great day, great celebration. The city was jam-packed with people and very few incidents. So, we're thankful for everybody's hard work, including our sponsors. Without them, none of this would be possible. This week, as we continue to roll through summer, there are several things that are going on. Fair kicked off today. That will run through the twentieth, the Chautauqua County Fair. Tomorrow is week two of Music at the Point, featuring Zon City. Thursday is Music at the Pier with Silver, Extreme, and Midnight Recovery. Saturday, the nineteenth, is the city of Dunkirk Beach Bash, which also coincides with the fiftieth annual men's fast pitch softball tournament. We are doing Beach Bash this year in collaboration with Beach Dog Grill. There will be pickleball tournaments, activities for the kids, free music, so come on down, support our local businesses, and have some fun. And also on Sunday is the fiftieth annual Rotary Fly and Breakfast from eight AM to noon. And we invite all visitors to take part in these exciting events this week and in the coming weeks. Also, as a reminder, tonight, immediately following the meeting, the city is hosting the first public, public engagement meeting, beginning discussions around possibilities of nuclear power in our city. We're honored to, we are honored to welcome Dr. Andrew Whitaker, a nationally recognized expert in nuclear standards and engineering, as our featured speaker, who will be available for questions and answers following his presentation. That's all I have, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the rest of communications from the public and continuing issues.
Request from Chautauqua County Partnership for Economic Growth and the city of Dunkirk's Paint CHQ Local Steering Committee to close Central Avenue between Lakeshore Drive and Second Street on Saturday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, from five PM to nine thirty PM, for the Paint the CHQ Mural Festival Dunkirk Block Party.
Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, do I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approve subjects of appropriate insurance systems and usual conditions? Moved by Councilmember Laskoyak, seconded by Councilmember Nichols. Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Laskoyak.
Aye.
Councilmember Zatorzki.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser.
Aye, motion carried.
Request from the Dunkirk Falcon Club to close Benton Street to traffic from twelve thirty to seven thirty PM between Roberts Road and Liberty Street on Sunday, July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, for the member appreciation event.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, do I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approve subjects of appropriate insurance systems and usual conditions?
Shalom.
Moved by Councilmember Nichols, seconded by Councilmember Laskoyak. Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Laskoyak.
Aye.
Councilmember Zatorzki.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser.
Aye, motion carried.
Loudspeaker permit request from the Dunkirk Falcon Club to use amps and speakers on Saturday, July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, from one PM to five PM for their Rock the Lot party.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, do I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approve?
Shalom.
Moved by Councilmember Nichols, seconded by Councilmember Laskoyak. Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Laskoyak.
Aye.
Councilmember Zatorzki.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser.
Aye, motion carried.
Loudspeaker permit request from Julian Zurbini to use speakers for the Zurbini Family Circus on August fifteenth and sixteenth, from three PM to six PM at the Chautauqua County Fairgrounds.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, do I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approve? Moved by Councilmember Nichols, seconded by Councilmember Laskoyak. Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Laskoyak.
Aye.
Councilmember Zatorzki.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser.
Aye, motion carried.
Loudspeaker permit request from CPEG to use amps and speakers on Saturday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, from six PM to nine PM for their Paint the CHQ Mural Festival.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, do I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approve?
Shalom.
Moved by Councilmember Nichols, seconded by Councilmember Laskoyak. Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Laskoyak.
Aye.
Councilmember Zatorzki.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser.
Aye, motion carried. We now move for reports of standing committees, boards, and commissions. Councilmember Laskoyak.
Yes, in, in light of our guest speaker on nuclear energy right after the meeting, and in respectable and hopeful anticipation, I have no questions or statements. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Zatorzki.
Um, just real quick, Lieutenant Orellano, on street parking. Same rules citywide, right? Doesn't matter what street it is. If there's a specific rule, there would be a sign?
Uh, generally, yes.
Okay. So, same rules citywide, so there's no reason that people should be confused. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes. First, I'd like to say happy birthday, Nick.
Thank you.
Uh, second, I would like to note if the city has been presented with the thirteen point six or seven million from the governor's office to pay off the RAN that's due next week.
It's our understanding it would be wired into our account on Monday and then transferred either on Tuesday or Wednesday to pay off the RAN.
Okay. Just going to do a quick reminder again, when you are cutting your grass, and I know we aren't taking any yard waste, please don't blow it into the streets. It's plugging up our receivers, and our guys have a lot of, some chores to do within the city that's in their ground. We can't be cleaning every street every day of the week, cleaning out the receivers. People are wondering why their streets are flooded. This is the reason why. The water, the rainwater takes the debris down the street and clogs up a receiver. And councilmembers are getting phone calls on it continually. Please, or please, just blow the grass the other way. I know it's an inconvenience right now that we don't have a place to put our yard waste. And I've made four trips over to Ellery so far this year with eighteen bags. Do we have any more information on an ACO for the city of Dunkirk?
We don't, and actually, we're working on forming a committee to solve this problem.
Thank you. I'm done, Nick.
Thank you. Here's, there's no underpinned business or prefiled resolutions. Moving on to new business. I understand there's a walk-in resolution. Clerk, could you please introduce the walk-in resolution?
Walk-in resolution thirty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-five, the reassignment of aviation easement.
I, I would...
Motion to accept the walk-in resolution on the agenda. It's like...
No, I would like to make move to table it. I mean, I just heard about it as I walked in today.
Unless Elliot can, unless Elliot can explain more in detail so the other two councilmembers can understand it. It's quite clear as what's written here.
If I may have a moment to, it's a pro forma resolution. A little bit of history. Both airports in Chautauqua County, the Dunkirk one and the Jamestown one, were at one time owned by the cities. They were transferred in nineteen ninety-three to the county of Chautauqua. Unfortunately, the easement in question won from one Alvin Martin in nineteen seventy-one for an aviation hazard easement was not transferred over by the city attorney at that time. Now, the county would like that easement to be transferred over for the expansion of a local business, which I noted was nuisance no more, and they're working with the county on that matter. Full disclosure, I use nuisance no more, so...
Yeah, I've used them. No, I understand the resolution. I just feel that, you know, we shouldn't have these popped up.
Okay.
You know, to us at the very last minute.
Yes.
As you know, I would like to peruse it and think about it, and I probably have questions, and...
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay. In that case, I'll assume there's no motion to accept the walk-in resolution. Therefore, the walk-in resolution will not be added to this evening's agenda. Is there any further new business to be discussed this evening? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Moved by Councilmember Laskoyak, seconded by Councilmember Zatorzki. Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Laskoyak.
Aye.
Councilmember Zatorzki.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Wiser.
Aye, we give us now insurance. Thank you, everyone.
The presentation is going to be this way, so it makes sense to sit over there if you want to.
Stay in here.
If there's room in town, just keep this over there. I guess that's...
Okay.
Oh, it's going to be over.
I can't locate me, so sure, maybe I...
Why do we do that?
I don't think she needs to say. I mean...
I agree with you on that one hundred percent.
Hold us both.
It's all right.
It doesn't matter.
I am, yes.
Oh, is this, is he going to use this one?
We can bring it in here.
Because there's one over there as well.
Well, this one has the...
Yeah.
Can't see.
How's that? All right, I'm just gonna do the quick introduction and why we got it. And I'll, I'll get, I'll hand it off to you, and you can introduce to.
Say it like a whole thing about why we're here.
I was just gonna talk about the studies real quick.
Okay.
And then hand it off to you. Mayor? Not really. You got stuff, here, EJ, or? Can everybody please take their seat? We'll get this, uh, program underway tonight. So I just, my name is Vince DeJoy. I'm the director of planning and development for the city of Dunkirk, and I want to welcome everybody here tonight to, for this first community discussion that Mayor Kate Dobias has, uh, initiated to discuss, uh, uh, repurposing of the NRG coal-burning power plant to a potential future nuclear power plant. And this is something that we've been working on for a number of years through some various studies. Next one, EJ. But basically, the reason that we're here tonight is, uh, the governor's announcement back in June, uh, about three weeks ago, that she has asked NiPA to explore the potential for, uh, placing a, citing a new, uh, nuclear power plant somewhere in upstate New York to meet the energy needs of the state that we're gonna, that we face, you know, with retiring of coal power plants and so forth. But, um, the city has been planning and going through a number of studies for the past six or seven years now to bring us to this point. Next one, EJ. So, back in, uh, 2019, 20, and finishing up in 2021, the city got a grant from Appalachian Regional Commission to do a feasibility, phase-one study, just basically to, um, look at potential other reuses for, for that very important site that we know that, um, is so valuable to the city and such a big asset. And they came up with a number of, uh, potential reuses, one of them being power plant repurposing. Um, that would probably be one of the best ones, uh, industrial redevelopment. Um, and we've been looking at, at that. Um, a data center, a data center, if, if that were feasible, would, uh, require significant power, uh, source. So, um, this could align with it. Battery, energy storage, micro grid development, or a clean slate. Now, a clean slate, meaning that you would demolish everything there and start from scratch, but, um, the, the cost of environmental remediation isn't even known, and it could be significantly high, and who would pay for something like that? So, that brought us to the next study. This is a study that was funded by NYSERD, a New York State, uh, Energy and Research Development Authority. And the purposes of, uh, this just transition, uh, site reuse planning study is to analyze, um, reuse potential, basically to look at what the infrastructure was there. What's the sewer? What's the water? What is the grid connections there? Um, so, NRG has been very, um, cooperative in providing some drawings and, uh, blueprints and, and the like, and helped the engineers at Colliers Engineer and Design, basically, uh, define what, what's available. Generate developer interest, um, they created a, a number of marketing collaterals, and, uh, it was never really deployed, and, uh, they're, they're still, uh, in, basically, in NRG's hands, all of our collaterals that were created. But promote community revitalization, um, identify strategies to, for future and, uh, broad community revitalization of this, you know, significantly important asset. So, basically, um, we're here tonight, um, and Mayor Kate will, will go into more detail here, but, uh, uh, we have been looking at this with close collaboration with Chautauqua County Executive, uh, Steering Committee, and, uh, I'm pleased that, uh, that our two speakers tonight, um, Dr. Andrew Whitaker from UB and a good friend of ours, Dennis Elsonback from Phillips Lidle, who has been on our steering committee for these, uh, studies, and, uh, is, is an expert in, in energy. So, um, with that, I will, uh, turn it over to, uh, Mayor Kate.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here this evening with us. Um, as many of you know, Governor Hochul recently announced an initiative to explore nuclear power in New York State Clean Energy Future. She's invited communities across Western New York to be part of that conversation. I want to begin the rec, by recognizing and commending the governor's leadership and her bold vision. Exploring advanced nuclear technologies presents a potential pathway towards substantial energy economic growth and long-term environmental stewardship. Here in Dunkirk, we are no stranger to the energy conversation. The closure of the NRG facility was a turning point for our community, one that resulted in the loss of good-paying jobs, significant tax revenue, and a proud role in powering this region. That history is part of what brings us all here today. While the city of Dunkirk is open to learning more and exploring the possibilities of this opportunity, I want to be clear, we will not move forward with any proposals unless it is shaped by and supported by this community. That's why tonight and the weeks ahead, we are here to listen, to answer questions, and to ensure that the voices of this community lead the way. This is only the beginning of what must be transparent and inclusive process. Together, we will evaluate the process and the opportunity to see if it's right for Dunkirk's future. With that being said, I'm honored to introduce tonight's featured speaker, Dr. Andrew Whitaker. Dr. Whitaker is a nationally recognized expert in nuclear engineering and structural safety standards. He has played a key role in shaping modern nuclear power and designed particularly the rel, in relative safety, innovation, and community resilience. We are fortunate to have him with us here this evening and to share his expertise on nuclear energy and what it could mean for Western New York, and with all things considered, what that could mean for a community like ours. So without further ado, I'd like to, please welcome Dr. Andrew Whitaker.
Well, good evening, and everyone hear me down the back? My students often say I don't need a microphone. They're probably right. So, we, you're gonna drive the technology?
I guess so.
Awesome. Thank you. Better you do it than me. So, uh, again, as the mayor said, the goal here is just to talk a little about what might be possible. Ultimately, you folk make the decision, and my goal is to provide you with, uh, informed thought, let me say. Uh, I have no skin in the game, uh, in terms of different reactor technologies. I, uh, work with a number of reactor developers, so I'm familiar with what's coming online, when it's coming online. As the mayor said, I'm a professor at the University of Buffalo. I also hold a faculty joint appointment at the Idaho National Lab, which is the nation's, uh, nuclear energy national lab. And I happen to chair the American Society of Civil Engineers Standards Committee that rides rules around how you analyze, design, and build safety-related nuclear facilities, which would include facilities that are used in the weapons program, quite different from nuclear energy. So it's a broad remit, uh, but we have a common approach to the standards we use for safety-related nuclear facilities. So, the next speaker, Dennis Elsonbeck. Um, well, you can read it faster than I can, uh, than I can repeat it here, but, uh, Dennis and I have worked together. Dennis serves on my dean's, uh, uh, Energy Advisory Council. He's a valued member of, uh, the UB community, and has provided leadership to the university across the entire energy spectrum for, uh, now a long time. So for that, the university is very grateful. And so the presentation tonight is going to involve about 15 slides and a video from me, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Dennis to talk about issues that he knows a lot more about than me, namely, economic development. So with that, next slide, please. So, all things energy in about 60 minutes. So, uh, Vince said you've got 60 minutes, and then, uh, time after for, uh, question and, or questions and answers. So, uh, we'll probably use a good fraction of the 60 minutes, but, uh, we're gonna cover a fair amount of ground, and I expect that that will leave opportunities or generate, uh, questions. So next, please. So, tonight, uh, I'm gonna start off with some myth-busting, and, um, I think it's important to set the record straight on a number of, uh, topics. Then talk a little about sources of electricity in the United States and in our state of New York. Uh, I will talk about the differences between base load, intermediate load, and peak load, and when those loads typically arrive, and, um, pivot to discussions about US nuclear energy. What are we doing now? And, um, what are the challenges? What are the opportunities? And I'll touch on a comment made a little earlier about safety. It's an important part of what we do in nuclear energy space. I'll introduce advanced reactors. So, the reactors that are coming online in the next 10 or 15 years, uh, not my grandfather's, my late grandfather's nuclear reactors from the 1960s, 1970s. Designs have changed fundamentally in the last, indeed in the last 20 years. And we'll look at options for nuclear reactors, the flexibility that they offer, uh, the timeline to build, uh, the footprint, the amount of land they occupy, and what we should be thinking about in terms of how we fuel these reactors. And then, I've got a question, why build nuclear? And I'm gonna put out some ideas. Uh, they may resonate, they may not, but, uh, it's relevant information. And then I'm gonna turn it to Dennis to talk a little about economic development, economics which need to drive most discussions, most decisions, uh, issues related to climate change. That's, uh, an issue that's important to all of us, certainly me. The importance of transmission backbone, and you've got transmission backbone here in Dunkirk that, uh, you have a great opportunity to take advantage of. And then, how do you distribute power once you get it to a major area? You've gotta think a little, uh, think through how you get the power to the off-takers. So, that's what we're gonna cover today in 60 minutes. Next slide, please. All right. So, 25 years ago, uh, Homer Simpson used to drive me bonkers. Uh, he, um, in that he would do things that were just plain outrageous. And it didn't, wasn't just nuclear energy, it was many things about Homer and his approach to life, which was probably not the approach to life that most of us have. But he worked at a nuclear plant, or so the story went. And, um, so, I'm gonna show this video, last a couple of minutes. Pardon? Okay. And, um, so, if we could play this video. No? I sent a, uh.
Sorry.
Oh, I think I'm disappointed for everyone here. Anyway, H-Homer, so perhaps we'll find this video and, uh, we'll send it to the city and they can post it somewhere. But anyway, so the things Homer, uh, did that, uh, bothered me, let me say. He, uh, for example, uh, he was shown to be sitting one day next to his office, uh, with the control room for the reactor, and he had taken the top off a, uh, uh, a 44-gallon drum of green goo, and it was labeled nuclear fuel, and he was having it for lunch. And the video says, well, nuclear fuel's not green, and when we move nuclear fuel around, it's not in a 44-gallon drum, it's in a 50-to-100-ton canister of reinforced concrete and steel. And myth number one was, A, you don't eat nuclear fuel, B, you can't eat nuclear fuel, and perhaps, um, the message is, uh, you shouldn't even think about how you, um, accommodate nuclear fuel on a one-to-one basis, let me say, where there's a very formal process for dealing with nuclear fuel. The second, uh, part of this video has Homer, uh, looking at something, I think on his phone, it was an ancient mobile phone, uh, while, uh, life broke down in the reactor building around him. And the takeaway there was reactor control rooms are very carefully managed. There are multiple operators, they're highly trained, and a lot of them come from our, uh, Navy submarine pro, nuclear submarine program. So they're talented folks who take their job very seriously, and they're trained over a number of years. And, uh, so they take their job seriously. Homer, by and large, did not. And, uh, so we'll make this video available somehow, but I encourage you to, uh, take a look at it. It's both amusing and correct. And the woman debunking Homer, yeah, she's a PhD student in nuclear engineering at the, uh, University of Florida, so it makes for a, a good watch. Next slide, please. So, I think as we talk a little about energy, we're gonna step back and look at energy broadly. We start at the level of, uh, at the United States, and then we drill down into the state of New York on the next slide. So, no, can we go back? No, thank you. So, in the left part of this slide, which is gonna be tough to see from the back of the room, we look at US, uh, generation of electricity by fuel source. And we see in 2022, which is the last year for which I have an image such as this, uh, that about 20% of the nation's electricity was generated by coal, about 39% by natural gas, a little less than 20% by nuclear energy, uh, about 7% by hydro, and, uh, I can't read the other numbers, uh, but they're relatively small contributors to the portfolio. So at the moment, gas, coal, and nuclear dominate. And what we're seeing, what we saw in the 2010s was the, uh, the market was retiring coal plants and replacing those coal plants with gas-fired plants. And now we're starting to say, well, how, ask the question, how can nuclear contribute to this energy mix? And let me just say at the outset, I'm not advocating for 100% nuclear energy. I'm not. It would not be a cost-efficient pathway to deliver electricity here in the United States. In my opinion, it needs to be part of the energy mix. What that percentage is depends on how you measure the power. But somewhere between perhaps 30 to 40%, given that we're not gonna grow hydro, and longer term, I think the nation will move- the nation will move away slowly from natural gas and it's moving away fairly quickly from coal. So that's what we do at present. And if you look at the comparison of life cycle costs, let me say, measured in terms of tons of carbon dioxide equivalent generated per gigawatt hour of electricity, we see perhaps not surprisingly, the coal generates the greatest number of tons of CO2 per gigawatt hour and onshore wind and nuclear rank near the bottom, which is a, in this case, a very good thing. And we'd make the case that nuclear energy is a reliable, low carbon technology as presented in this slide. Next, please. So I decided yesterday morning, when I was starting to pull together some slides, what's some perspective here? So I went to the New York ISO website and that provides real time data on where are New Yorkers getting their fuel? And if you look in the image on the left, and again, it's really hard to see that the contribution from what they call dual fuels, which you can read that as natural gas, natural gas, which is the light orange, nuclear, which is the yellow, hydro, which is blue. And you can get a sense for the percentage contributions from the size of the, the, those, those colored elements, let me say. And at 9:25 yesterday morning, wind and solar was delivering about 2% of the state's needs, 2% on a day when the sun was shining. So we're going to long way to go, if at all possible, with just a solar and wind build out. So I think that's one important point. And this is not my data, this is data generated by the state. And then the figure on the right shows of all of the quote renewables, and we include hydro in the renewables, hydro dominates. That's the blue in the right hand image with four and a half percent contribution to the total renewables, energy from wind and a fraction from solar biomass, geothermal and other sources. So this is ISO data. It's updated every half hour or so. So if you're interested, take a look at the website. I've identified the website in the bottom right hand corner of the slide and I'm assuming that these slides will be made available to any interested party. So that's where we are now. Next slide, please. So energy by the hour. So I just introduced here some images. These aren't relatively new, but they're meant to convey a message and namely in the summer and in the winter, we have a requirement in modern city, in cities and counties and the like in the Western world for what we call base load. Base load drives industry and industry drives the economics of a region. So here, base load maps to about 60% or thereabouts of the total demand. So we have base load shown in orange, we have a lighter orange, that's intermediate load, and then we have peak demands, which vary in terms of the time of day, summer to winter. But as we talk about energy, we need to think about what, what do we need to drive our communities? What do we need to drive economic growth? We're going to have to provide base load and base load at the moment is provided in this country by coal, gas, hydro and nuclear. So you've got to think about the energy mix and different types of power generation, solar and wind have a really important role to play. It's making them dispatchable at the right times that represents a challenge at this point in time. Next slide, please. So if I pivot now and look at U S nuclear energy, what do we have? Well, we have at this point in time, 94 reactors operating at 53 plants across 28 states, with most of those plants located in the eastern United States. We have at Palisades in Michigan, the restart of reactor, that'll be unit number 95 and that's expected to come online in 2027. And a little closer to home, perhaps Three Mile Island in Pennsylvania, the restart TMI unit one, that's planned also for 2027 to 2028. So we have a deep bench depth in terms of operating nuclear reactors in the United States. And we have, despite what some people might say, an excellent regulator who has, who has done his and her job very, very successfully now since they were formed back in the 1970s. So that's where we stand at the moment, and this is a figure generated by the U S Nuclear Regulatory Commission. Next slide, please. So one question I often get is how do these plants work? And so shown here is a cutaway view, or it's a cartoon of sorts, I should say, of what we call a large light water reactor. These are the more traditional gigawatt scale reactors. Say Oswego was mentioned a little earlier. The plants at Oswego are boiling water reactors, not pressurized water reactors. So the technology is a little bit different. The bits and bobs that you need to generate the electricity are a little bit different, but they share many of the same features. So the image on the left, the photograph, those in the back row would probably struggle to see, I would certainly struggle to see it. That's a photograph taken of Vogel IV. That's the last nuclear power plant to be brought online in the United States. That happened a couple of years ago at Plant Vogel in Georgia. And that is a 1,000 megawatt, gigawatt scale pressurized water reactor in, designed by Westinghouse and they're based in Cranbury Township, just a little south of here. So the goal here is to generate steam. That's the primary function of what's inside that containment vessel. So once you generate steam, you drive a turbine, that drives a generator that pushes power into the grid. So it's how you generate the steam. At the plant that was shut down a number of years ago, coal was used to generate the heat, to generate the steam. In this case, we use nuclear fission, fission of low enriched uranium to heat water in that reactor vessel. Because it's a pressurized water reactor, the, the water doesn't boil. It, as you increase the pressure in a water, you increase its boiling point. And the pressure that's developed inside these reactors is of the order of 150 atmospheres. We're now experiencing one atmosphere multiplied by 150 and that's the engineering that's associated with that pressure vessel. That said, the engineering has not changed in a long, long time. We know how to design pressure vessels. But the goal here is you heat water, you move it through a steam generator, that generates the steam in an independent cycle. The steam generator then produces steam that drives the turbine. The turbine generates electricity, you put, push electricity into the grid. It's a pretty simple operation. It's the exact same approach that we use to generate power that drive our naval nuclear assets, the submarines and the aircraft carriers. But it's a pretty simple process and it's well established, these reactors have functioned this way for 60 years. What has changed is how we implement safety procedures, the early reactor designs, and I'll talk a little about Three Mile Island later on, that used what we called active safety systems, which required intervention from people and equipment, mechanical systems. We've pivoted in a, I can say, we have pivoted to passive safety systems where you rely on mother nature and heat conduction and gravity to provide the required safety. So there've been some fundamental changes that perhaps haven't received a whole lot of press in the last 20 years. But this is the traditional reactor, the large light water reactor, generating about a gigawatt of power per unit. Next, please. So challenges for nuclear energy. Everyone gets up and says they cost too much and we're working very hard at the University of Buffalo and with colleagues at MIT to drive down cost. So to give you a sense for what a gigawatt scale reactor would cost, post COVID, construction costs for all energy generation products has gone up by about 40%. Nice round number. But to build unit number one of a large light water reactor will cost you about $13 billion. That's a significant amount of money. And that doesn't include financing costs, which we're hoping that the state and federal government would provide some level of financing to aid this process. Now, $13 billion per unit, assuming we build two, is 15, 15 billion for unit one, 11 billion for unit number two. As I note there, we can adjust these current designs, which is AP 1000, I think to achieve some significant cost savings and to bank our lessons learned from the construction of the two units at Plant Vogel. So let's just assume for a moment, we spent $13 billion on a large light water reactor. What does that mean, let's say for Dunkirk? Well, you spend 50 to 60% of that $13 billion on civil construction. That's money spent in onsite where you're building the plant. So if you're going to spend $13 billion on a plant here in Dunkirk and you make that decision, you're going to spend seven and a half billion dollars of that here. That's a shot in the arm for any community. What does that map to? It maps to thousands of jobs for Western New Yorkers and these thousands of jobs, based on the Plant Vogel experience, run from what we call skilled tradies. And I'm born and raised in Australia, so tradespeople are affectionately known as tradies. They are super talented folks that get the stuff done. And so the jobs that are generated range from tradies to PhD engineers and scientists that get involved in the day to day operations of the plant. Of the total of $13 billion, less than 20% is going to be spent on specialty equipment, some of which is available here in the United States or could be built in the United States, may not be available in the state of New York, but it's less than 20%. So when you build a nuclear plant, you are spending your money on the site where you're constructing it. And lessons we have learned over the last 10 or 15 years really focus on how do we build these plants faster? How do we build them cheaper? And this gets to the issue of supply chains. One of the issues we saw, the significant overruns, cost overruns at Plant Vogel, we didn't have the supply chains in the United States. We're now figuring out supply chains. So you stand up the supply chains and you can build economical nuclear structures. Importantly, the humans that build these plants, they are the single most important part of the supply chain. That was a lesson that we'd learned in the 1980s. We'd forgotten by the time we got around to building Plant Vogel and I think it's a really important lesson learned. But to give you a sense for how many folks were building on the site of Plant Vogel when they were constructing Vogel III and Vogel IV, about 8,000. 8,000 well paid union jobs. That's something to think about. Next slide, please. So what are the challenges for nuclear engineering or nuclear energy? And I picked here on engineering. And I don't think there are many technical challenges. We need to do a better job of being able to standardize designs for the purpose of driving down costs and increasing throughput. We've worked at the University of Buffalo on what we call seismic protective technologies. These are technologies developed at the University of Buffalo, now being deployed around the world to protect mission critical assets, including hospitals, data centers and so on. So we can do some things a little better. The issue here is not so much quality, it's how do we turn projects into products? And that's one of the engineering challenges that we are working on now. The generation four reactors that are being discussed in the press are substantially different from the traditional large light water reactors, which use water as coolant. So the generation four reactors use liquid metals, molten salts and high temperature gases as coolant. So designs that to, most folks, brand spanking new, these technologies were first test driven in the 1950s, 1960s, not pursued because at the time, the focus was really on generating electricity with gigawatt scale plants. But there's been a pivot to different types of reactors. Importantly, reactors now can be designed and are being designed to generate both electricity and process heat. And why process heat? Well, a lot of industrial processes, say the production of green steel, that requires heat at a very high temperature, read seven, 800 degrees Celsius. Certain classes of reactors produce that heat, so there'll be no need to turn that into electricity and then turn it back into heat. You can use the process heat directly. Think about the Dow build involving high temperature gas reactors in Texas. Dow will use the heat directly to support their chemical processes. So what the new reactors do is provide flexibility and opportunity that didn't exist with the more traditional reactors. Disposal of high level waste or what I call spent nuclear fuel. This is a political problem. It's not a technical problem. The technical part of this was solved a long time ago. So there needs to be a better political discourse to make some decisions about whether we continue to pursue the option to store waste at Yucca Mountain. Or we pivot to perhaps a more modern approach, which deals, which stores spent fuel at depth in deep geologic repositories, where the fuel can be brought back to the surface of the earth at some later point in time. The advantage of using this deep geologic repository approach is that you then don't have to move the spent fuel off the site. You can develop these repositories under the reactor site if you have the appropriate geology. Other challenges for nuclear energy, they're non-technical. There's the public perception of risk. I'll come back to that in a minute because it's really important. And concerns people have about the safety of fissile material. So with traditional reactors and the images I show in the top right of the slide, the first image top right is of a fuel assembly being loaded into the core of a reactor. The second image is of a spent fuel pool. So once the nuclear fuel has been burned sufficiently, it's withdrawn from the reactor. It is still radioactive. It's then put in a large pool of water shown in that central image, where it stays for a couple of years until the neutron influence is relatively low. It's then withdrawn from that spent fuel pool and then put into a nuclear flask shown in the bottom right hand side. Pardon me, of the slide. This gives you a sense for the size of a flask of nuclear fuel. This is not what Homer was basically pulling the lid off in the cartoon, in the video that I couldn't show you. Next slide, please. So let's talk about nuclear safety and I think it's a really important point and there's a lot of information out there that's just plain wrong. So we'll start with top right, Chernobyl. How many people in the audience were old enough to know what was happening with Chernobyl? Good. What was Chernobyl? It was a Soviet era weapons production facility. It produced weapons grade plutonium for the Soviet weapons program. It looked nothing like a Western reactor. It didn't have a containment structure that had been routine in U S reactors since the 1950s. It was operator error, lack of confinement, a lack of containment and a host of other poor decisions that led to the Chernobyl accident. Is it directly applicable in the United States? No. We don't build those types of reactors. We never have. Let me now pivot to Three Mile Island. I think there'll be some of the audience who remember TMI. That was a nuclear accident. How many people died as a result of the TMI accident? None, correct. And that's a really important point to keep in mind. Now, what happened at TMI was certainly operator error. And that operator error then translated into a domain of engineering we call human factors engineering. So it spawned an engineering discipline that addressed how humans operate or collaborate with complex equipment. But to the point, TMI, no deaths. A cleanup cost, to be sure, no deaths. Now we get to Fukushima Daiichi, 2011. I think we probably all remember that. So this was a nuclear accident. So this was a nuclear accident that destroyed three GE boiling water reactors that date back to, they were designed in the nineteen sixties. How many people died in the tsunami that followed that earthquake? About twenty-two thousand. How many died of radiation poisoning because three large reactors were destroyed? The number's zero. One or zero, depending upon the press that you read. So there's a lot of chirp about what happened at Fukushima, and yes, it was an accident, and it's going to cost a lot of money to clean up, but no one died. So talk about safety, which is what the regulations are written around. That's a really important point to keep in mind. Now, the three GE reactors that were destroyed, were destroyed in part because the base of the reactor was generating hydrogen, and that hydrogen was vented into what we call secondary containment, and then a spark set off the explosion. Back in the nineteen seventies, the US NRC, working with GE, saw this as a potential problem. In the late nineteen seventies, the US NRC required the US reactor operators to vent the hydrogen into the atmosphere, which is no big deal. That information was passed to regulators in different parts of the world. If that retrofit had happened at this plant, we may not have seen those explosions. So some decisions were made that would not have been made in the United States. So I think we learn from these accidents, we don't trivialize them, but we also have to figure out what are the lessons learned and what don't apply. Next slide, please. So these advanced reactors, how are they different from large light water reactors? So this is a kind of a busy slide, but long story short, there's flexibility. And we have now a spectrum of reactor technologies that Dunkirk could consider. The small reactors, known as micros, or what I call reactors in a box. A lot of the work supporting the development of microreactors has been sponsored by the Department of Defense under its PLE project that started probably ten years ago now. And the goal with the microreactors here was really, there's observations made during the more recent wars in the Middle East, that American servicemen and women were dying in significant numbers in supply convoys, supplying diesel to forward operating bases, for example. And so a decision was made to think about energy a little differently, and that spawned the work on microreactors. But they are relatively small, I'll call them reactors in a box, they can fit inside a Conex box, and they generate, I would say, a few megawatts of electricity. So good for remote towns, not good for generating a gigawatt of electricity. Then we have minis and smalls, depend on the words that you use. The advanced reactors that are probably worthy of consideration here would generate somewhere between eighty megawatts electric and three hundred megawatts electric. And then we have the large light water reactors. But the point here being that now there's flexibility. If you want fifty megawatts of nuclear energy, and you'd asked the question fifteen years ago, Westinghouse would have sold you a gigawatt, but you only wanted fifty megawatts. So the customer really wasn't part of the decision-making process, you got what was available. What we're seeing now is more availability, more focus on the customers, much more flexibility. As the middle part of this slide shows, there's a variety of outputs, electricity, hydrogen, and process heat, not just electricity. So again, the customer picks what the customer wants. And then there's a multitude of uses, from district heating to marine shipping, production of green steel, production of concrete, which is a, although I'm a structural engineer by training, concrete's a pretty filthy material. And space applications, although no one is suggesting launching a large light water reactor into outer space. But the point here is, the customer gets to pick. Next slide, please. So timeline, how long is it going to take to bring these newer technologies online? And again, difficult to see from the back of the room, but under the previous administration, there were significant efforts to accelerate the delivery of these advanced reactors, substantially reducing the time required to take them critical, to demonstrate that the technology works. So a number of the modern designs will likely be operating for the first time in twenty thirty, or perhaps twenty thirty-one. That's an appropriate timeline to consider. They're not available now, and they're not available tomorrow, but they will be available in five years, and in terms of a heavy civil construction project, five years goes by in the blink of an eye. But that's the timeline. So the only reactors available tomorrow in the United States would be the AP one thousand or the South Korean APR fourteen hundred. And perhaps the new scale reactor, which has been licensed by the US NRC, hasn't yet been built. Next slide, please. So what do these reactors look like? They don't look like a coal plant, that's for sure. But they also don't look like traditional large light water reactors. So going in a clockwise direction, starting top left, is an artist's rendering of the plant now being built in Wyoming by TerraPower. TerraPower is a Bill Gates-funded startup, and they're collaborating with GE Hitachi to build the natarium reactor. This reactor will generate about three hundred megawatts electric of electricity, and it uses thermal storage in the way of molten salts to enable dispatchable power. If I go top right, this is the Seadrift build for X Energy. So here, the technology is high-temperature gas reactors, there are four of them, located one next to the other. And so this is a different technology, supporting or generating process heat, it's a different technology from the TerraPower design. In the bottom left, we have a maritime application of nuclear energy, both for moving the ships, doing away with diesel, but also producing synthetic fuels. So again, under the previous administration, there was a lot of focus on the production of hydrogen and ammonia. And those processes are challenging, let me say, but one option is to construct motherships, place them in perhaps Lake Ontario, and take these synthetic fuels, hydrogen, again, hydrogen and ammonia off these motherships and bunker ships, and then move them up and down the eastern seaboard, exiting through the St. Lawrence Seaway. The image bottom middle is a microreactor, again, reactor in a box, and gives you a sense for the scale of these reactors at the smallest size. And then on the right is a large-scale industrial facility, we call this a hydrogen giga factory. It's set up to produce synthetic hydrogen using high-temperature gas reactors, but this is another industrial application of next-generation nuclear. Next slide, please. So footprint, this is a question that comes up every now and then. So the image on the left is taken from Google Earth, and it's close by. So this is the plant, and I had my PhD student go and figure out the exact area. We measured about sixty-five acres, I've seen seventy-five acres reported, but it's in the range of sixty to seventy acres. To give you a sense of what can be done, so at this point in time, Holtek, at the Palisades site in Michigan, as well as restarting a large light water reactor, they're planning to build a two-unit SMR three hundred plant. So this is a total of six hundred megawatts of electricity, two reactors, two co-located reactors. So how much area is required? And what you see at the back end of that photograph, at the top right, is Lake Michigan, another one of the Great Lakes. So in terms of total area required for the plant, for what we call a protected area, that's thirty-five acres, for the spent fuel storage and the cooling towers, another twelve acres, for the switchyard, which you have one of already, that's five acres, so the total is less than sixty acres. So the takeaway here is that you could place a unit that's going to be constructed in Michigan and be operational by twenty thirty on this site. Whether you choose to do so, that's your decision. Next, please. But the point is, it's doable. So what types of fuel do these new reactors use? There are principally three types of fuel. There's low-enriched uranium, which is the uranium that powers the reactors in the operating fleet, so enriched to, let's say, two to four percent. There's something called HELO, and again, under the Biden administration, there were significant efforts to ramp up the production of HELO, which is high assay, low-enriched uranium, it's enriched to a little less than twenty percent. And that's going to be used in a number of the advanced reactors. And then, of course, there's highly enriched uranium, that's used by the Navy and not used in operating reactors. So the large light water reactors, Holtek and GE Hitachi, they're going to use LEU, low-enriched uranium, that's available now. X Energy and Kairos Power, they will use a fuel called Trisop, pebbles, and that pebble is shown on the right-hand side, and the size of that pebble, about the size of your fist. But there'll be a hundred thousand of those pebbles inside your reactor. This fuel is not available now. We expect it to be available in the twenty thirty timeframe. So there's no point building a reactor if you can't load fuel into it. So as part of your decision-making process, if you choose to go nuclear, then you've got to think through these issues. What fuel will be available, when? So that's an important ingredient, it's like buying a car and not knowing where you can buy the fuel. You're probably not going to do that. Next, please. So why build nuclear? So I would advocate, or make a case, that it is highly reliable power. Capacity factors for operating plants are in the high ninety percent. Dollars that we spend in the state of New York, that'll be most of the dollars that go towards the construction of the plant. So dollars are spent in-state on New Yorkers, and I can't see any downside to that. Construction, these are well-paid union jobs, against something that I think no one would argue against. And once they're put into operation, they'll run for minimum forty years, could run for eighty years. And if they run for eighty years, it'll be longer than anyone in this room is going to be alive. In terms of jobs, once the construction is over, these data on the right-hand side are from large light water reactors, so gigawatt-scale reactors. Once you scale to, say, six hundred megawatts, you're not going to reduce the numbers, or at least the workforce, by forty percent. So if you build a gigawatt-scale reactor, based on current practice in the United States, these are seven hundred and fifteen new jobs. Median salary wages for nuclear utilities in nineteen, twenty twenty-one, forty-seven dollars an hour. Median salary across the entire industry, thirty-nine dollars per hour, and I'm pleased to report thirty-three percent of the workforce, women. We need to bump that number up, in my opinion, but that's better than where it used to be. So with that, next slide, please. You'll be pleased to know I'm done. Dennis, over to you.
So what do you think, Andrew, by the way? Is it the right person? Is the right person? Well, I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank the council members, I want to thank Vince, Vince who's become a really close friend relative to looking at economic development throughout New York, and also looking at how energy policy, so the idea of nuclear, it didn't come out of nowhere. You know, someone should say, jeez, isn't New York a state that has a nation-leading climate action program? And the answer to that is yes. So why are we now talking about nuclear? So what Andrew wanted me to do is put some context around this, because this is the right audience. I actually loved the way the mayor started out on her whole introduction here, is that we're not leaping forward, we're doing due diligence, we're really looking at it from the point of view of the governor set something forward, should we be looking at it? You should be looking at it, you should be looking at just about everything that has to do with energy as it marries with economic development. These are not mutually exclusive issues, and unfortunately, they happen to come across as if they're mutually exclusive. So not only do we have industry or nation-leading goals relative to the climate program, we also want to be leaders in AI, data centers, semiconductors, and advanced manufacturing. Why? Why? It creates jobs, it creates local revenue, it adds to the tax base, but really what it does, and again, I have to excuse, I'm an engineer, so life's easy for me, I can fix this stuff. Then I went ahead and got an MBA and just totally destroyed my life, because now you have to justify everything you say, it just drives you crazy, so. But what's happening is, is that if you add something like a data center or semiconductor, not only does it bring jobs, but it wants us to start thinking about this from the context of what else does it do? Do you know how much infrastructure is going to have to be built in New York just to connect to the solar, wind, and battery storage? We're talking billions of dollars, right? And so that infrastructure also has to be upgraded because of the age of the system. New York has some of the oldest electric infrastructure in the nation, and that's not something I wish we were leading in, by the way, because that really limits our ability to respond to opportunities that are presenting themselves. So what are these type of potential visitors, investors to New York, what do they need? Power. It's the first thing they'll ask, do you have power? How much capacity can I get? They're not even to the point to say, well, how much is it going to cost us? But who in this room would have asked that question first? How much is this going to cost me? And that's the disconnect sometimes when we look at energy policy. They also need to have near-perfect power. That means that it has to operate twenty-four seven. Andrew uses the term base load. That's what these type of manufacturing facilities need. Twenty-four seven, and if you know what a sine wave is, it's got to be perfect. No jagged, no, the sun, the cloud went over and then through a snap of the finger, I had a jagged sine wave, and because what that'll do, for those of you in advanced manufacturing, it actually shut your plant down, even though you'll say it doesn't have an outage. So it has to be perfect power, and it has to be something that these individuals can count on. Because if you have capacity and you have good power, you have just made Vince's life easy. Because if you put that out there, that that's what we have in New York, people will want to come here. Where was an announcement made today by the Trump administration, by the way? Where? Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Wouldn't it be nice if that was done here? And I think that's going to be part of the conversation. It's not just, is it nuclear, is it solar, is it wind? It's all the above. It's actually, how do we actually make sure that we're really good at being responsive to the individuals who consume power, because that makes New York more attractive. It'll make Dunkirk more attractive. It'll make every city in New York more attractive. But more importantly is, every time you add something to the utility system, they actually then contribute to the overall fixed cost of infrastructure. then contribute to the overall fixed cost of infrastructure. The fixed cost of taxes. And yes, the fixed cost of our climate programs. And they're costly. And I want to touch on some of that. So this is a data center that I'm working on. It's in Niagara Falls. I just want you to maybe pay attention to where it says contribution of fixed, fixed cost. Because the more I get a contribution to the fixed cost of electric infrastructure, the lower you pay. Because these customers, these users of energy are large. So this particular, uh, this particular customer has 140 megawatts of power it, it needs. So they contribute local sales tax and state sales tax, $5 million per year forever, unless taxes go up, of course. It also, it also contributes $8 million a year to climate programs. Now, if you were, if you were looking and loved the person who came up and said, hey, let me be part of the process. If I went to that person and I said, geez, you know, you got $8 million, you can either send that to NYSERDA or other, uh, entities that are running the climate programs, or what would you do with it in your city? Well, would you invest it in workforce development? See, these are the things we've got to start thinking of differently going forward. And the contribution to electric infra, infrastructure is $6 million. Now, that's $6 million that the average ratepayer then does not have to pay. So the more of these that we attract to New York, the more downward pressure it will have on everybody's cost of energy. It's microeconomics. That is not how we operate in New York. We operate in New York under a regulatory system. And we need to change the way that, that, that has to occur. So when, when we're talking about nuclear, what I don't want you to do is, is just focus on that. Think about this thing much more pragmatically, much more holistically, so when you get involved in this. Cause the idea that you're having these type of sessions is critical. But I would ask you to open your minds to everything that has to do with energy, supply, demand, and delivery. So here, here's kind of like our, our climate program. Are you familiar with this, uh, Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act? That's not enough yeses. And it's one of the biggest concerns that, that I think as a state we have, is that not enough people actually know that the CLCPA, which is the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, exists. And you need to get more understanding of what that is. So the primary goals are 70% renewable energy mix by 2030, which we're going to miss. The other one is zero emissions by 2040, which we have a chance to actually capture if we start rethinking the type of supply that's available to us in the state of New York, and one of which is nuclear. Right? It's, it's just a combination. It's going to take all of the different types of supply sources to achieve those type of goals. I, I wish there was a silver bullet, there just simply is not one in existence today. What, what, if you look at those two pictures to the right, what don't you see? What don't you see?
A big ice horn.
What is that?
A big ice horn.
Hmm. Do you see a city there? Do you see a manufacturing plant?
No.
Do you see a transmission line?
No.
No. Because a lot of our renewable energy really is looking for land. You know, they're looking for a lot of land to build very large solar, wind farms. And those solar and wind farms are being built, and then they have to look at, well, we have to also add battery storage, so it takes a lot of land. So now what happens to the utility system that has these type of supply sources in those type of locations? Guess what they're doing? They're having to rebuild their transmission lines in order to connect to these type of supply sources. Why? Is because they're not near transmission assets or cities or manufacturing facility, right? So now we're rebuilding a transmission system that is not adding revenue. It's not actually adding to the contribution to the fixed cost. Does that make sense, everybody? Cause it's, it's a fundamental miss that we have got to all come to some conclusion that we should really be able to solve that together. So this is happening today. And this is a big concern simply because we need to build more assets, more transmission assets, and upgrade the, the assets that we have today where there's cities, where there's manufacturing, where Vince, there's economic development opportunity because it increases, it, it contributes to taxes, contributes to jobs, and, and so on and so forth. Does that make sense? Okay, yes, sir. So what, so, so when somebody says, well, what's the, then the legislative agenda that's happening today at the state level? Well, on the regulatory side, it follows whatever laws are in place. And, and the law today is the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. And so most of the regulatory issues and what's being passed today is actually to solve for 70% renewable energy by 2030, which we're going to miss, and zero emissions by 2040, which I think that if we all came together, you could see we have an opportunity to achieve that. And it's not just with nuclear, there's hydrogen, there's so many different options that are out there that we want you to kind of like get a feel for. You could be a player in this, certainly because of the assets that you currently have here in Dunkirk. But it really is the right economic approach is how do I get my supply closer to where my power is needed? Because the further, the further away I put my supply to where the power is needed, the more cost it is to you as ratepayers. That's the bottom line. So looking at it from an opportunity point of view and co-locating something like, uh, nuclear or other doesn't dismiss solar, wind, and batteries. It actually allows you to think about the right, uh, process for the right application and really to keep costs down, not to continue to grow. Next. So, so this one I love using. Now, uh, this is the city of Buffalo. It's a depiction of the city of Buffalo. The green, red, and yellow lines, those are the electric feeders in the city of Buffalo. I could do the same thing here for the, the city of Dunkirk, by the way. So what do you think red means? You think that's good? Yeah, it's bad. That means that feeder is already at capacity, so not only can I do economic development, I actually can't decarbonize on that feeder, or I'm going to burn it down. When we went through the Climate Action Council sessions, they said in order to fully achieve, uh, the goals of the Climate Act, electric demand would have to go up 50%. So now I add 50% to the yellow lines. Guess what happens to the yellow lines?
Red.
All right. And what about the green?
The yellow.
And guess who's paying for all of that and upgrades? Right? So it's not just supply. It's really, if we're trying to increase the demand because we're trying to grow our communities, we're trying to revitalize our communities, we're actually trying to be players in the economic development market, we have got to focus on transmission and distribution to help us attract industry, business, and revitalizing our communities. Because we always make a statement, yeah, well, my, my community is depressed, so I'm sure I got a lot of capacity. You know, Buffalo used to say that too. Everybody used to say that. The problem is, is that, that electric demand has grown over the years regardless. So you, you've seen industry leave, so you assume that there's capacity. There's no capacity. The reason for that is that the utilities do not invest in depressed areas. They only invest where there's growth, where they can justify building out their infrastructure. This is yours, Andrew.
Just a note of thanks to folks that provided input to the slides that we presented.
Yeah. And the last thing I would say is that if you look at your bill, your electric bill, especially if you're, if you're in manufacturing, um, someone, cause I hear this all the time is that a lot of our, our climate initiatives, which I'm not a guns, but a lot of our climate initiatives are to actually, uh, lower the cost of energy. When someone says that to you, think about that. Is lower cost of energy the same thing as lower electric bills? No, it's not. Cause if you look at electric bill today, especially for a manufacturing facility, 60% of that bill that goes to the utility's delivery charge is the climate cost, and that is growing. So 60% of your utility's service charge, when you see it on the service charge, not the commodity, 60% of that delivery charge is to pay down for the Climate Act. And you should be asking, is this helping the electric bill go down? Because if it isn't, then we should be asking questions like, where does nuclear fit? Where does solar, wind, and battery fit? Because that's the only way you're going to control energy, and that's how you keep the cost of energy lower, especially on your electric bill. So just please be aware of that. Andrew and I wanted to give you this context. Instead of just looking at nuclear, we wanted to give you a broader context of energy policy in, in New York, um, because it is a runaway train, and people like yourselves get your hand on the wheel. It's the only way you're going to steer it, and the only way you're going to do that is to participate. So I appreciate the, the time and the attention. Any questions for Andrew? Yeah? No, go ahead.
And what happened in the last image? This one. So as, as we finish the, the formal part of this, I thought we'd close with something I've been working on with some colleagues. We call this reactors in a very big box. This is highly scalable, uh, microreactors where those units that you see in the long skinny building in the middle of the slide, they're fam, it's a family of microreactors. You, it's plug and play. You have a certain energy demands, you either add or subtract units on an as-needed basis. So the point is, we're thinking about delivering energy differently now than we were 30 or 40 years ago. And that's important. And we need to continue to innovate, to look for cost-effective solutions. So thank you for your attention. We'd be happy to take.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you produce the electricity, correct? Here in Dunkirk. How does it get to my house?
So we generate the electricity, that gets to the transmission place.
Okay.
Dunkirk is fortunate in the sense that you have a high voltage backbone coming out of the plant, the NRG plant, that could certainly be used going forward regardless of what power solution you choose. So you need to get it from high voltage to low voltage. That talks to the issues that Dennis, uh, discussed at the end of the presentation, distribution capacity at the local level.
So this is sold to national grid and then sent to our house, like it is now?
Yes, yes, sir. Yep. It is. It'll go from the, the power plant to the major substation. The substations have a transmission level, high voltage level. It gets stepped down to a distribution level voltage, and then it's on the wires that are in front of your house.
Okay.
That's a good question, it's a right question.
You mentioned earlier that the water would be heated, you're looking for steam. I imagine the water was Lake Erie water, but what happens to the, to the residual water? Does it go back into the lake and is it heated? And if it's heated, wouldn't that change the culture of the lake? How do we prevent it back?
That, that's an excellent question. And how many years did the coal plant run here?
Lot of years.
Lot of years? That's exactly what the coal plant did. It took water out of the lake as coolant and pushed it back into the lake. So if you're looking at next, looking at nuclear plants using water as coolant, the temperature at which the water is returned to the lake is highly regulated. So think about Oswego.
The boiling water reactors there, they use Lake Ontario water. On the other side of the border, our Canadian cousins, they have a family of, they call them heavy water reactors. They use water as a coolant as well. So it's a controlled process, and rules were written by the EPA probably 50 years ago to talk about how, what's the acceptable delta on the water, water as intake, water at the uptake. So it's a scientifically controlled process, and the health of the lake would be an important part of that discussion.
But you don't have, actually, you can't actually tell us what that would be then? I mean, because now that the coal plants went closed for so long, there are positive things.
We're seeing improvements.
Improvements. So now we're going to put something back in that can take us back where we just recovered from.
I'm, I'm not sure I agree with the statement, things wams, that things wams are poorly. There's a temperature differential, yes. I'm not sure what, there's a temperature differential, intake versus outtake, controlled by the EPA, federal regulations written around what you can do and what you can't do.
Prantos being changed according to the main executive order?
I have no clue what Mr. Trump has got on a daily basis.
But we're going to impact that still with something like nuclear. It's definitely, it's directly going to impact this if, if the regulations are being fast-tracked.
I'm not suggesting, well, I can't talk to what the current administration is doing.
Those are our concerns.
Well, they're valid concerns, but if the EPA regulations are followed, as they are followed for every operating, all of the 94 reactors that operate at the moment, they are obliged to comply with EPA rules in terms of water temperature, changes of water temperature. And I would anticipate, I would hope that those rules would be adhered to.
If I was a resident and I was interested in participating in this, I would require that kind of stuff.
Well, I want, well, the executive order is there. So it's going to be, they're going to be reduced, they're going to be changed so that they can fast-track the building, reduce regulation.
That's, that's, fast-tracking the building and water temperature, two different things.
Well, we're interested.
Are all plants already on Lake Erie?
Hang on, uh, I think there are three operating reactors at the moment. So I'm not like, like, like Ontario, not Lake Erie. Let me finish with your comment. So I'd like to close, Andrew, your comment.
Okay. Well, when you were speaking earlier, you were talking about waste, which I didn't realize that we were going to be storing it around the same location, nor did I realize that NRG was going to still own. I didn't realize that. Isn't there fuels now, isn't waste being reused as fuel? Is that a process that could be a protection here?
There's certainly a process. So we could choose to close the nuclear fuel cycle. That's a different discussion because that is required, that would benefit from a different class of reactor called a fast breeder reactor, and, um...
That's not what we're looking at here, but...
Not here, no.
No, that's not.
We are not looking at, we are not looking at breeding weapons-grade plutonium, which is what those breeders do.
Oh, no. Well, look, we... For energy production, I know.
So we produce plutonium in this country for the weapons program. And we have for 80 years.
And do they do that here? Do they do that here along our lakes where we're, we've been working for 10 years to build a tourist industry here?
We do not, we do not, ever. Plutonium is not as bad as you, uh, might imagine it to be. Uh, that said, don't walk around with it in your...
build a tourist industry here?
We do not, we do not, ever. Plutonium is not as bad as you might imagine it to be. That said, don't walk around with it in your pocket. But the point, as Homer does here, Homer eats. But the point here being, these reactors use fuel that is below a threshold that is internationally accepted as the, as a point beyond which you start proliferate, to proliferate materials for the weapons program. So when I talked about halo earlier, that is just below the threshold beyond which you might start to develop enriched uranium to support a bombs program. We have one of those already.
Okay, well, we're just talking about energy, right?
Yeah.
And we're arguing the fact that these executive orders exist and they were signed in May. So the EPA, I agree with you a hundred percent, we need to be aware of those, but we can also agree they're changing. They're going to change. The whole point is to lower them, so we can fast track building. Well, I read them, I just reread them today, it's exactly what they said.
That's great, I've not read them, so I can't comment. You know, as a state, you could say, we're going to adhere to the rules that were in place last year.
Well, I'm not saying that, I'm thinking this is a good idea if we can guarantee the residents of the community the safety. And with the changing things, I can't see where we're guaranteeing this. We, Dunkirk in particular sells water. I mean, we've, we've got the water base here. How do we know what this level's going to be that's going to keep that water safe? Where's our guarantee?
If the water temperature goes, well, I think we digress, but if the water temperature goes up a little, you're not compromising safety. You're not. It's just different, it'll attract different types of fish, that's guaranteed.
I know you're trying to dissuade our fears.
Sorry, we're just, one at a time.
I know, I know you're trying to dissuade our fears about really died and these other accidents. I'm concerned about the low level of radiation exposure. And they, there's a number of homes within a mile of the power plant and a lot more people within five miles. Speak to that, about the water being in the air.
So you lived next to a coal plant for a long time?
We lived in it every day.
I did, but I'm okay now that it's not skewed.
Okay, I, I got, so hang on, one, one, one at a time, please. So to your issue, there are requirements that have been in place for a long time that keep radiation dose at a, what we call the boundary of this protected region, below a threshold limit. And you get a much greater dose just getting on a plane and traveling from Buffalo to New York City. The radiation levels that are acceptable have been defined by the federal government. I don't anticipate them changing. But people have to realize that we're exposed to radiation each and every day of the year. And the dose around the perimeter of a, of a nuclear plant, the dose that the workers are permitted to tolerate, let me say, they're very, very low. And they've been in place for a long, long time.
Is the newer technology safer at lower levels, or it's just we're okay with it? Like, we're okay with it?
We're already, in my opinion, at radiation levels that are well below thresholds that are accepted in other industries that generate radiation. So are the new technologies, the new, new technologies are different, but they're adhering to the same rules that have been in place for a long, long time. So they're not changing the radiation rules, the, the reactor technology's changing, but those health physics rules aren't changing.
All right. Go to the front row.
You mentioned fundamental changes to help human error. Is the nuclear energy community looking at AI and Nvidia to help that?
Not sure it's Nvidia, but there is work being done at the Idaho National Lab to see how AI, or more correctly, machine learning, reinforced learning can help. It's not clear to me what that role will be, because nuclear is a highly regulated environment at the moment, and AI is a bit like the Wild, Wild West, where anything goes. So I think we're a long way from AI playing a fundamental role in operating nuclear plants. That's not to say we shouldn't be starting a discussion on what I might have played in twenty years' time, thirty years' time, forty years' time. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Good. I said we go down the back, then we'll come up the front. Please.
You mentioned the storage facility that would be built on site?
Yes.
Okay, well, several years ago, I shot a documentary over the West Valley, and I was the last student being in the room before the steel rods went under that, with half lives, like, I believe it was like fifty thousand years. Now, when you build that structure, which is probably cement, three, four, thick walls to house that, if that's going to be close to our water, you know, if there's any like earthquake damage or, you know, or anything like that, I'm worried about those, the, the nuclear waste possibly getting into groundwater and things like that.
Okay, I think you're worrying, and you don't need to, the flasks that we store nuclear fuel in, I showed a photograph of one. The technology's not new. The technology is also tested. So they take these flasks and they drop them twenty meters onto reinforced concrete blocks. They drive trains into them. I've seen a jet fighter flying into one of them, just to demonstrate that they are relaxed. If there's earthquake shaking that is sufficient to damage one of those fuel casks, Dunkirk will no longer exist, it will be wiped off the face of the earth. I, I think that's the point people don't understand. We designed this, these, so we'll go back to Indian Point. I was asked about this years ago, and my comment to the staff of government requirement then was that if we get an earthquake that's going to damage that plant, New York no longer exists, we can destroy it. So it's perspective, perspective, perspective. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Uh, you were next.
Chief, my question. What size generating station are you contemplating for the Dunkirk site? And what was the size of the generation station, what it was called?
I think the answer for coal was six hundred megawatts, or thereabouts, plus minus. But on the NRG website, I went there a while ago, that information's available. So it talks about the generation capacity in megawatts thermal, megawatts electrical. Second, I'm not proposing any one technology. I'm saying there are technologies out there, you can think about them. Some technologies will be available sooner than others. Others will, some will use low enriched uranium, some will use halo. What I did say was that I could take a plant that's going to be built in Michigan on less than sixty acres, and you could deploy it here. It's, the total area is less than sixty acres.
Generate exactly.
So it's, that was six hundred megawatts.
And that was six hundred megawatts?
It's about, it's about six hundred megawatts.
About the same size.
It just, and that was half the stance. But other, different reactors will occupy slightly different footprint.
But I just, the point is, the same generating capacity.
It would be possible, yes.
But that's not, that's not been determined, to be honest. So, because I said on the U.S. committee, we're just contemplating sizes. Yeah.
So if you wanted to, if I could just add, if you wanted to replace what was here, and then say, gee, we want an extra three hundred megawatts because we want to pursue a couple data centers, that, that would then need to be part of the discussion. What do you need soon? What do you need medium term? What do you think in long term? Because these structures take a while to build, they're heavy civil construction projects. All right, lots of hands. You had your hand up first.
Yeah, I have a question. Has there been any studies in reference to nuclear and cancer in, in those areas?
Yes. Cancer rates are lower. Why? Because tax base goes up, healthcare improves. They've actually run studies where they've looked at what's the effect of adding a nuclear plant to a community? And, you know, jobs, tax base, hospitals, they all contribute to good health and.
There's better doctors? There's better doctors in that nuclear area?
You don't, not doctors per se, you don't need cancer specialists. We have, so the, the point here is, there's no downturn in health. And the communities that currently are home to large light water reactors, they are really keen to build some more because they see in their community the value of that generation asset. Down, down the, hang on, right down the back.
Yeah.
Would you stand up a little so I can hear you clearly?
I'm like, can you show any kind of like example to really a projection of what this can do economically for the city, not just based on the energy? But like, this city's been dying for years. Population is down, like, can you show us like, what happened in Oswego when they started building power plants? Did it bring in more industry? Did it bring in more people? Did it bring in more money? Not just based on that power plant alone? Because I think with the current state of the city and the debt that we're in, we really should consider this. Because I think it would be, it would be huge, guys, huge. Look at our generation.
Dennis, do you want?
I don't, we don't have the numbers, but I know that has to be part of the assessment is what value does this bring to jobs, to taxpayer? What revenues are brought in? The old days, I, I was with Nargama off the national grid for thirty years, so they pay, the plant pays a lot into the local taxes, which reduces the tax burden across the, across the residents, that you're looking for. But my point, that's the type of questions you, you want to make sure you're bringing out, because that, because it's got to be an economic impact study as much as anything else, as you point out. It's not just energy, right? What's the economic impact? And there's economic impact studies that would probably follow some of the recommendations from the studies, the Amelation Study, and then the nicer, nicer study, I would imagine. So that's, that's the right question, I appreciate that.
Like, if you could show that, like, stuff like that would happen in Dunkirk, if you could make that case, more opportunity, because that's going to be what decides what the city, I think. You can talk about safety on the law, but like, the cities, the populations are exploding half, because it's always war.
We already have cancer problems because of everything we've been spraying on the crops for fifty years.
All right. Just give them a.
Someone may, I choose. Two questions, and maybe Vince may weigh in on this also. My understanding is the governor's proposal is for a one gigawatt or thereabout plant. And what we, the plant that you showed with, I think, six hundred megawatts, that fit on the sixty acres? And we have between, we have between sixty-five and eighty, I've seen the different sites, numbers for the NRG plant. Would a one gigawatt plant fit on that, fit on that site? Because it seems like if this went through, the governor is not going to want to cut her proposal by forty percent, when she's looking at providing electricity for all of New York State and not for, and not for Dunkirk. Number two would be if this goes through, the governor's proposal goes through, are we talking decades? Are we talking years? What are we talking about? One of you gentlemen made the mention of how the nuclear oversight and regulations is a, can be a lengthy process and, and contributing. So what are, you know, what's, what's a good guess of it? And what is the build out on this? Is there any idea at this time, or are we still so new that even the governor doesn't know that she just put out a proposal that, let's take a look at this?
I, I can't comment on what the, what the, I can tell you what the governor was thinking. I look at this as the first opportunity, not the last opportunity. So to build a gigawatt scale reactor from scratch, probably, assuming we started digging a hole tomorrow, it's going to be five or six years, is my guess. And the big challenge is not so much the construction, it's getting the humans in place to make it happen. So you need eight thousand people. That's, you think about building the Gills Stadium, that has given the construction industry in Buffalo pause. The number of humans we need would be four or five times greater. So there's time required to mobilize, and then you get busy and build. I've always been an advocate in large light water reactor space, of not building one, build two, three, or four, which is what they did in the Emirates with the South Korea reactor. What they found at the end of the construction of unit four, cost had come way down, the construction workforce had been doing this for, at the time, ten years, and they were really good at it. So I'm not an advocate of just building one reactor and saying, that's it. To give you a sense of what we need in this state, the planned micron building Syracuse, that will consume two point five gigawatts. That's the entire Niagara project, voila. And of course, then the question is, what happens to the rest of New York that relies on the Niagara project for power? So I look at the one gigawatt as the starting point. How that is put together, whether it's SMRs, multiple large light water reactors, I think that's part of the discussion that has to happen. How much land area do you need for a gigawatt scale reactor? At this point in time, based on land use at other sites in the United States, it's a little over a square mile. That's a little more than what you have here. That said, people have traditionally built, they picked the sites a long time ago, and we continue to build at sites that were already set aside for nuclear in the seventies and eighties. Could you chisel that down? Absolutely. To what, what level?
Ontario Power Generation is building four three hundred megawatt, so one point two gigawatts. So that was their decision, because the first one would cost a lot, the second one a little less, the third one a lot less, and then the fourth one less than that. All told, it brings the overall costs of that, of that production down. I don't believe, I think the way the governor characterized the, the one gigawatt was one gigawatt of nuclear, not one gigawatt, one plant. So I think what's going to happen, is I, I heard this while you gave a presentation in Buffalo, that an RFP or an RFI will be coming out, I think, within a month, two months, something like that. And that will have to be submitted by the community, the municipality, which I like a lot, because then you control the process. You might then say, I would like just a six hundred megawatt, I just want to replace what was there, so, so that's what we want, right? And that fits the land. Or, or you have a different location, however. But I wouldn't get hung up on, you know, that announcement being one gigawatt, one location. I would look at it as an opportunity of saying, you know, we'll, we'll take three hundred, we'll take six.
Does bigger improve?
I'd be flexible.
Does bigger improve our economic opportunity? Does it go bigger?
I think if you build anything there, it's going to improve your economic opportunity. And the reason for that is.
For more than data centers.
That's what I, and I would say that. I think it's, it'll, it'll allow you to look at the potential of co-locating advanced manufacturing, data centers, semiconductors. It'll allow you to look at it differently. So, so Andrew mentioned Three Mile Island. Do you know who started, restarted Three Mile Island, by the way? Did the utility? Did the state? Who did? Microsoft. So does that come out of your pocket? No. That's a market direction that, that gives more flexibility on how we look at these alternatives going forward.
Is this going to come out of our pocket? Isn't NRG asking for a rate increase right now because they need to upgrade the infrastructure?
National Grid.
National Grid? Aren't they asking for an upgrade?
National Grid just received an upgrade, so I'm sure they sent a thank you notes.
Will this cost us more, will we be paying for this upgrade?
You're paying for it anyway, and I'm telling you, so right now, what happens is, is that we always say solar is cheaper because of the sun, and I'm not against it. But where we're putting the solar is in remote locations, and then you're having to rebuild the whole transmission line. So I'm not so sure it's that, that much less expensive.
I know.
So you're paying for that anyway.
But I want to make sure that on the back end of it, if we're paying for it up front, what are we getting back?
That's correct.
What, what do the members of the community, we just got our taxes raised, right?
And that, and that, to your point in the back, in the background, I said the similar thing is, what's in it for us? So you've got to think about that. You know, what do you want? You, look, I'm not going to feed you what you should ask for, but let's say I was a member of this community, I'd say I'd like a part of their power.
This is difficult, we're, we're looking out for ourselves now, because look at that.
Yeah, I would. You've got to look at it from the point of view that you could be a host community.
Longevity.
And a host community has leverage, right? And that's how you, that's how I would look at it, not how you would look at it.
You tell them that before you leave.
I can help.
So there's a couple of questions, a question area. Let's go over here, and then, please.
I have so much to question. My name's Alfred DeLong. I personally went to school out of mouth, we go, we're a power plant. Now, I went. Now, I went there for technology management. I served on the environmental health and safety department for the college. And we, one thing that we constantly test for, does quick nuclear, first thing you think about, like, we've brought up several times, radiation. In my time, my four years ago, I go, we stand for this many times, never had problems with radiation. And just looking through the archives of school, the photos throughout the years of that community, when that nuclear plant went up, everything went up in that community. There were more businesses that wanted to block there, there were more people wanting to rely off of their grid, and they got the money to push that on them. I just wanna say personally, from the younger generation, many of us wanna see this happen. My family's been here for several generations, and they were a steel family, they were military families. And to see what the city has done over the years to suppress the area is deplorable. We finally have a chance at something huge here, folks. And I hope that you all look into that, because personally, I don't wanna leave Dunkirk, but if things keep going in the direction they are, what is there here for the younger generation? Nothing. So personally, I'm all for this, guys, and I thank you for having this meeting.
The micron project, are they gonna be using nuclear or will they be building up?
They can't build, I think we're, we're tapped down on hydro in this state. Uh, so it has to come from somewhere, because they're gonna require firm power, so it's ninety-nine point nine 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 percent reliability. And, um, they've got the nuclear option and nothing much else. They can, they, they could choose to use gas. That's gonna be the backup, I would say.
I was in a meeting where a micron was, uh, a presenter, and that question came up. Are you, you know, what do you, what, are you considering using alternatives like nuclear? Their answer was very simple. We need everything that's available to us. Now, does that mean they will go nuclear? It means that it's, it's not off.
The micron project has changed the welfare of that whole community.
I have checked it totally.
Just to add one comment to that, there was discussion a couple of years ago about taking power from the units, the operating units on Lake Ontario and using that to power the micron facility. But I, I remember, our, our discussion at the time was, what does everyone else use? Because there's a lot of industry that requires firm power, so.
Sir, before you leave, the gentleman, you can ask your question, I'm sorry. I'll be right back. Oh, okay. The gentleman in white, then, please.
Hi, I'm, I'm Jedi. First off, I'm a little biased because I'm actually working on buying energy, put my hat in the ring for this. So, from what we're seeing, you're looking five to ten years before you even build a power plant. If we were digging today, it'd be five, six. The Fukushima thing, okay, there were some human-like deaths, not a lot. What was the bigger thing is, they shut.
So, listen, one, one step at a time. No deaths associated with radiation poisoning in that. Twenty, twenty nothing.
You gotta look at the ecosystem, huh? Well, the ecosystem's more important. It killed the sardine population, they had to shut down the farming, because it killed ninety-four percent of the sardines in the Pacific within a year. Now granted, the solution to pollution is dilution. So as it's diluted, it's going to damage now. So the big question, like, yes, we have hydro, special wave energy, way bigger, we can do many gigawatts on lake hearing with wave power, much better. But my question is, what are you gonna do if we win? Not if we win, we have a hundred foot wave come up, how will the reactor not melt out?
Well, I, where's, well, I'd ask, where's that nine hundred foot wave power?
The pole shift.
What? Let's anchor this in science.
This is science. The magnetic pole is moving, and it's been moving every year towards a straight line clear as I've ever.
I think that's, with respect, not incumbent, for fact.
Um, I, uh, what type of, uh, facility are you looking to build there? Because I, I'm sure people would be interested.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at using it for the building materials of my hexagonal interlocking filler system, where it can build houses, buildings, like things like that.
Yeah.
And then on lake hearing, I'm looking to create wave power hydroelectric that would do four hundred and fifty megawatts.
That's a hundred foot wave, it's that.
They're seven, they're mile long, you ever take a seventeen hundred to eighteen hundred foot wave, you can flip it over and do a real thing.
Okay, please.
Please put a question over here.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just concerned, I have a lot of concern, but one of it is, only people accountable for the expense and the time cranks. We talked a lot about, um, controlling, um, the resources, um, from start to finish, building any of these plants. And yet, when China and Russia built the blast, like, the small nuclear reactors, the cost of it is for them, again, the governments are controlling it. Their costs were three times the original projections, as most of the timelines for construction. Now that case, the government's then eating both the time and the cost. Well, if they can't do it as the government, if you're proposing we do it privately, who's going to eat all that? I, I understand that economic development, but these costs, and you hear about many, many projects going over budget and over timeline, well, I have a feeling that somebody, and it isn't them eating the cost, that, that it all runs back on our backs.
Uh, you know, one, that's possibly, but if you look at the off papers, they're studying life itself.
Yeah, that's what I meant by Microsoft starting up Three Mile. If you look at Microsoft and Duke Energy, uh, they've, they entered into twenty-five year power purchase agreements that Microsoft pays over time the cost of the system, but what they get in return is price certainty and capacity. Those are two elements that, you know, so, but your point is well taken. It is, it's the right questions to ask. My concern is, though, your costs of energy are going up today because of our, part of the way we're designing transmission systems that don't serve you. And my, and I think that your point is extremely well valid, and you need to ask and make sure that whatever proposal, if the city puts in a proposal, that that's part of your, your area of interest that needs to be assessed. That's what I would say.
Let me just go ahead. So you raise a good point. I'm not sure I want to necessarily benchmark US construction reactors against the Russians or the Chinese. If I choose to use the Canadians, a little closer to home, with the refurbishment of the four units on Lake Ontario, they've come in on time, in fact, ahead of time, under budget. And, uh, with, and there are, no, none of...
Are they using newer technologies though?
No, no, that was using more...
Did you say these newer technologies aren't even online yet?
They are being prototyped now at the Idaho National Lab to base it in...
I love that you turned down the Iowa one because of the cost per kilowatt hour. It was too high. I thought Iowa sealed it because of the cost per kilowatt hour being too high.
You're thinking about a very different problem. You're thinking about the new scale build? And new scale, and we knew fifteen years ago it was gonna be expensive. It just got more expensive because they chose to make certain decisions about the plant, which is the reason it wasn't built. That's not the case here. So the Canadians have been able to bring nuclear projects in on time, in fact, ahead of time, under budget. The South Koreans with the build of the four unit plant at Baraka, under time, under budget. So if you get the right contractors involved and the right people involved in financing, you can deliver these complex projects under time, under budget, or on time, on budget. So, I think your examples, broad, I'd say, would respectfully broaden the scope of the examples you can see. There's background, second to background.
So, is there any companies now, any like building companies now, or is this just a Kathy Holt will say, you wanna do this, find a spot? Or is there actual companies, like, we're ready to go once we have...
So...
Or is there still all really a place dream?
No, so, the, the, I picked on the Palisades reactor because I happen to know it well. Uh, they have consultants now, uh, developing what we call construction documents, which are needed to, uh, to build these facilities. So there are consultants developing designs, and they are, right? No, I don't, I don't know about this life, but I'll pick on the Palisades site. So they have a contractor on board, they have consultants on board, the design is proceeding. They hope to break ground next year, uh, on some nu, non-nuclear aspects of the project, and be done, load fuel, and operate by twenty thirty.
I know, but is there, what I'm asking, is there any of those companies, like the Palisades company, you know, that projects? Is there any companies like that that are actually looking at these sites in New York?
For, for me, that would be...
I heard Oswego was being considered, Dunkirk here is being considered, and there's a spot, I think, up in Buffalo that's being considered.
They have to be signed. So there are plenty of candidate sites, and I think the community would have to come together to say, this is what we want to do, and then...
It would be nice for the community to be able to see, this is what we can do with this property.
If, if there's, if there's interest, I'm sure the mayor, uh, could invite, could invite some of the reactor developers just to come to Dunkirk to talk about what they're doing, their particular timelines, and so on. So, that's a near-term discussion for folk in Dunkirk to have. But, pardon me.
I'm sure the bad application's set out yesterday. Like he said, this is light change or western import matter.
I, I don't, I agree with you, but for the project to be a success, the community have to buy in, they have to see the benefit. Because the influx of eight thousand, uh, construction workers into Dunkirk, just, just across the road, that's a lot of humans to deal with.
Yeah, I mean, like I heard what she's saying. We need to know that there's some company that's gonna come in, we're gonna back this, we got X amount from the state, X amount from the city, here's what we're gonna do.
Have you met eight of them?
And, and we're gonna cover the rest. You brought up the Bill's Stadium, for example. State eight of, what, a billion dollars of the stadium? Who would make the rest? Who's eating the rest after the state government? We can't just fall on everybody in Dunkirk. I mean, hell, our taxes just went up eighty-four percent. I don't, I can't afford another eighty-four percent hike through.
So, I think, these are...
I wanted to leave.
So this is a really good question for the governor, how is this project gonna be financed? That I don't know.
And I would put, let's, and I'm not doing your application, but let's say I was, and I, I was part of that, I would, I would actually put that in there in terms of what your assumptions are. I'd also, I'd put in there, which some we always forget, is workforce development over a period of time, so that those jobs come here, are originated here, um, whether they're the operating side of the plant or as part of the construction, you want a certain percentage of the workers to be local. And so that's just part of your applica, that's part of your, you know, I can't dictate how you do it. I, I just think, step back. What is it that you're looking for? What benefits your community? And make sure that it's just part of your application, or why would you do it?
People don't think that this is gonna benefit the community.
We're not seeing, yeah, what's gonna be offered available.
Okay. Just check down there. Yes, if that you...
I have a couple of comments and a question. First comment, you said something about this technology, small reactor thing, about ten years old. I point out in this direction that, uh, local products working on small tech, small reactors came before nineteen sixty-two, uh, for young.
So, let me just make one observation. The first micro reactor was deployed in the United States in about nineteen fifty-three. So the tech, some of the technology's been around a long time. It just wasn't considered commercially viable all those years ago, and that's now being revisited. So...
You never mentioned any of the downsides of this. It seems like you were doing all positive things, but did it really...
I mentioned the issues with the accidents at Chernobyl, Fukushima, and TMI cleanup.
Uh, I don't know if I necessarily consider those to be practical downsides.
Then I struggle frankly to see a whole lot of downsides. I really do. Because...
Paying first cost and how much that, that's gonna cost. A lot of economics at scale, but we're reducing the scale of these plants, and how does that affect construction in Austin, if we should drop?
It, the two data points we have, uh, well, one data point we have, at least in the United States, large light wood reactors, building them for the first time after not building them for about twenty years, and not having robust supply chains, and not having a construction workforce that understands how to build heavy civil. That's changed. Now, I'm not saying there'll be no problems, I can't promise you that, but the lessons were learned. So southern company that built Plant Vog, they are now consulting abroad on construction of eighty-one thousand in Poland and parts of Eastern Europe. Why? There are lessons they learned that they're gonna apply to the next series of builds. So, to get to the point earlier, you have to control construction, I get, but I'd say that about any civil engineering or mechanical engineering enterprise. And you, so you need good consultants, you need, you need to de-risk these projects financially, which means you have to figure out how to deliver them on time, on budget. And you then need to have, say, the state government backstop some of the financing. So, with the construction of Plant Vog, the interest rates that were being paid on that construction, because it was done, um, in the private sector, about ten to twelve percentage points higher than if you were building, uh, say, a non-nuclear structure because of the perceived risk. If I look at, again, the builds in other parts of the world where they were financed were appropriately, let me say, the cost was much less, the risk is much less, things get done. So, is there a risk? There's risk with everything we do. People ask me about risk with nuclear facilities and what we designed for. We designed for a risk that is somewhere between one divided by a million, one divided by ten million every year. And you might say, gee, where's that big? But what's the risk of dying in a car accident in the United States any year? What's your risk?
That's not a risk we're leaving for children. So that's not really fair.
No, but, but what is, it's what we accept as...
We're looking long term.
What, what do we accept as risk each and every day? It's about one divided by ten thousand. It's a factor of thousand. So, we can have the discussion about risk, that's a really good discussion to have, and I'm happy to have it.
Just, just one last thing, Andrew. I wanna thank you for the information that you've given us tonight, and it's, it's answered a lot of questions. I, I wanna thank you, very well done, and...
Thank you for the invitation.
Yes, I would, I would just leave out the Homer Simpson one, because over the past years, predictions that he's made, the sense that he's made have become true.
That's a scary thought. I wanna get the, the guy in the, in the row, and he's been trying to get there. Sorry, sorry.
Just wanna thank you guys for coming in, giving us some information about the power. I worked for the power company for over forty years at the Dunkirk plant that was aligned, and I worked that publicly. All the Oswego, so I know everything you wanna know about Niagara Mall, and especially that power plant. I was a environmental coordinator for over five years, I was a former engineer for several years. NRG took over, and they went from a company, Niagara Mall, that had industrial, electrical, and every type of engineer building that plant. It's a power plant. It's not gonna be anything else other than a power plant. There's only two options out of the six that were on that core. One of them is repurpose it, could probably be more like gas, condo, but probably gas. If you wanna go nuclear, there's a lot of things physically that have to be changed. That plant was designed as a power plant for coal. From the bottom of that plant to the top of the plant are six boilers and furnaces. If you remove those, you've got six massive poles the size of this room plus. The second thing is, there's six tunnels going up each day like that, watering. That plant moved twenty-four thousand gallons in an hour through that power plant, just for cooling. Most of that plant was built by excellent people from Bethlehem Steel, Allegheny Level, and Elway. Most of the heat exchanges that are still in there were built right here in Dunkirk. Most of the people that worked at that power plant were from western New York, so there's a plus there. But what I really wanna tell everybody is this, that power plant... But what I really want to tell everybody is this, that power plant, if you want to demolition, have a demolition there, it's gonna cost just as much as the wind turbine refit, reprocesses, or whatever you want to do. If you ever looked in Canada, there's a plant called Nanico, it was right across, Nanico's right across from Lake Hurles. It had two seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot stacks that produced three thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty megawatts of power. Dunkirk steam station backed out at base over six hundred megawatts of power. They, Canada, took that down because they wanted to eliminate coal, just like New York State and part of the rest of the country. What happened there is that plant was demolished, both stacks fell, everything actually. And what they did, they cleared the land, and they were gonna put tunnels on it to put aside the beautiful property like Dunkirk Steam Station. Well, what happened was the Ministry of Environmental said, you can't do it, you have to dig down at least ten foot of soil and remove the soil, okay? They did that. Still didn't have certifications of any. So what they did in Canada, they put solar. The whole two hundred and some acres is solar. And you know how many megawatts they produced? Thirty-five.
Yep.
Okay? Same thing with the wind turbine. We can only grow wind turbine because of the energy, but it would take probably, I would say close to two hundred of windmills to produce what this power plant made in one hour, okay? It's a power plant. The plant was built to rely, to take an earthquake, it's built to bedrock. And the other thing is, they took the two steel stacks, now I find those stacks because we had monitoring equipment on, okay? Let me think about the fire mill regulations. Anytime that power plant had one drop of oil, the official says, hey, we got a problem. I dealt with the EPA, DDC, the Coast Guard, and especially Department of Health. And anytime they had, any type of inefficiency of a puff of coal came out of the stack, ten thousand dollar fine. Okay? That's just, that's just one part of it. The thing is, that plant at one time in the nineteen eighties was paying something like twenty-four million dollars a year in taxes. That went to the city of Dunkirk, the county of Chicago, the school system there in Dunkirk, and the rest went to the state of New York. Anytime that power plant brought a piece of new equipment in there, I don't care if it was a small feed pump, if it was a little regulator or anything, the state of New York was right there to re-tax it. Just like if you buy anything here, that plant was super taxed. What I want to end with this is, I want to see something come in that power plant. And I know in New York State, I know the governor says she wants to build it probably in the northern part of New York City. It's gonna be built in part of New York City. It's gonna be built at Adirondack or Gaskell, because they need power in New York City. That five-seventy-five megawatt line that's coming from Quebec is not enough to support New York City, so they're gonna have another power line coming in, from Quebec Hydro. And where do we get our power from in here, Western New York? Canada. Ontario Hydro is bringing power in from North Carolina, going through the power pole, and in this district here to Western New York and Dunkirk, if you own the area. And where else is it coming from? The state of Pennsylvania. Now, the Homer City plant, which I visited several, several years ago, was the smartest coal-fired plant that I've ever seen produced. Because why? Because coal went right from the coal mine on a conveyor belt, one mile, right to the power plant. The biggest charge of this power plant here was coal. And it wasn't the price of coal, it was bringing the coal to Dunkirk until we brought it in by ships at the plant, which cut that cost down to half. Now, the other thing is, if they take the plant down, you gotta remember there was a coal pile that was one-third the size of the power plant. The coal power pile, over the last sixty years, was treated with chemical treated coal, even along the railroad tracks where those coal cars stood. There's all kinds of environmental regulations coming here to the state of New York. Personally, how I see it, I won't see a power plant here. If you go nuclear in New York State, if you, if you could say we're gonna build it tomorrow, it's gonna be eight to ten years for regulation. I'm telling you, the way, the polit, the political picture here is, New York State is absolutely terrible. We lost the power plant, we're losing the hospital, we lost a paper, a newspaper that was in Dunkirk. Everything is going here. We've got an airport, two railroad lines, and a beautiful lake with all kinds of possibilities, and we're doing anything. So somebody has to do something, and I don't know what it's gonna be, but the power plant, you got two options, and both of them aren't very good. I would, my suggestion is, whatever you can put in there, put in there to keep it going as a power plant. You're not gonna do anything else because of the way that power plant is situated in what is saying.
Yeah. Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming and participating tonight. There were some excellent questions, some excellent discussion. This is the first of many, but thank you.